Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Cepeda. Representing District Six, Chris Bowles. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the February 5th, 2025 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Gwen Myers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, I come to you this morning thanking you for everything that you have allowed this county to receive. Thank you for all of our employees who came into work to provide service in your name. Father asks those that staff who will present their item to this board this morning, give them the wisdom and the knowledge to present the way you have them to present. Bless our administration and bless this board in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. This morning, we have two very special commendations to present, and Commissioner Myers will present
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. Will the following people please join me at the podium, please? President Cedric McIntyre, Jerry Dean McIntyre, Ashley McIntyre, Christian Anderson, and Jerry McIntyre of Sukka Pipe Supply, Inc., President Eli Harey of Applied Sciences Consulting, Inc., CEO Chris LaFace, Adam Hopkins, and Michelle Faray, Arrie Pa and Associates, and Ken Jones, Director of Hillsborough County MBE SBE Programs. Good morning to you all. Every year, the Minority and Small Business Enterprises Award are presented to certified minority woman-owned and registered small businesses who plays a vital role in the community's economic prosperity. It is my pleasure to honor these businesses with a commendation that recognizes their hard work and dedication to our county. It reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to congratulate the recipients of the county's 2024 Minority and Small Business Enterprises Awards and recognize their roles as the key contributor of goods and services to the county, the local economy, and jobs for residents. The Minority Business Enterprise MBE and Small Business Enterprise SBE of the Year Awards recognize certified minority woman-owned and registered small businesses for their outstanding success in providing goods and services to the county in the areas of construction, contractual services, and professional consulting services or commodities. As we celebrate Black History Month, this is another example of contributions made by blacks to the county and the economy. Sukka Pipe Supply, Inc. is recognized as the MBE of the Year for providing $5,647,540 of service to the county in the area of material supplier. Applied Sciences Consulting, Inc. is recognized as the MBE of the Year for providing $683,449 of service to the county in the area of engineering services. The MBE Project of the Year Award recognized a prime contractor that delivered superior utilization of MBE businesses on a county-awarded project. Reaper and Associates LLC is recognized as a prime contractor for the MBE Project of the Year for its 27.39% MBE utilization and providing $3,310,883 of services in the area of sidewalk repair services. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend these businesses for their entrepreneurial spirit and support to the county's MBE SBE programs and wish them continued success in their future. Executed this fifth day of February 2025. Congratulations." And Ken Jones, if you would step to the mic and share a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it, and thank you all, the entire Board of Commissioners, for this opportunity to recognize these businesses. While Commissioner Myers has read the commendation that includes all of the recipient businesses, I won't read, but will present individual commendations to each business. To Sukka Pipe Supply, Mr. Cedric McIntyre. To Applied Sciences Consulting, Mr. Eli Arag. And to Reaper and Associates, and Mr. Chris LaFace. Thank you, Commissioner. Turn it back over to you.
Wonderful. Then we'll go to the back. No, no, don't rush, y'all. We have to take a photo. So we're going to go to the back and take a picture. But again, thank you for your support of the county and what you have done in working with our minority business and SBE, and please continue to provide their services on our behalf. Thank you.
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 Commissioner Bowles, Bonnie, would you review the changes to the agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
We have one off the agenda item by Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's item F5.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is to remove fluoride additives from the Water Resources Department process in accordance with the new legal findings, Food and Water Watch versus EPA, included in the agenda item backup. We have two items that have been deferred. The first one is item A25. This has been deferred to February 19th. This is to approve the fiscal year 25 budget amendment resolution to decrease the fiscal year 25 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. And then item E1 is deferred to a date to be determined, which is to receive a special appearance by Victor Crist, Hillsborough County Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller. We have several items for time certain. The first item is item F3 at 10:15. This is by Commissioner Hagan to authorize the chair to negotiate a contract extension on behalf of the Board with County Commissioners with Administrator Bonnie Wise and to bring back such recommended contract to the Board for approval. Item F4, also at 10:15 by Commissioner Hagan, is to authorize the chair to negotiate a contract with Melinda Jenzarly for the position of county internal auditor and to bring back such recommended contract to the Board for approval. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion to put the changes?
For approval?
Motion Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Cohen on change of the agenda. Please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
The Board of Going to Public Comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from the citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to Board members. Harvard has requests at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather the issues. The Board has set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The Chair will call on speakers by name, and which the requests to speak have been received. When you speak, address the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. We do have a number of speakers that have signed up this morning, so if everyone takes the full three minutes, we will not get to everyone. First three speakers are Debbie Potts, Amanda Bruno, and Laura Hartman. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Debbie Potts, and I am a former Hillsborough County teacher. I spent 33 years focused on the well-being and development of children. And today, I want to address something that has been a part of public policy for decades, but has also sparked a lot of debate, and that is the fluoride in our water. Fluoride has been added to the water supplies in an effort to prevent tooth decay. On the surface, that seems like a great thing, healthier teeth for our kids, fewer cavities, and less burden in families. But as a teacher, I've seen the effects that go beyond just dental health, and I think it's important that we also look at the potential negative side of this widened practice. Though the amounts of fluoride added to the water are considered safe by many authorities, recent research has suggested there might be more serious risks to children's development. Over 70 studies have shown that high fluoride exposure may be linked to lower IQs in children, especially in areas with naturally high levels of fluoride in the water. As a teacher, I know how crucial cognitive development is, and any factor that could affect a child's ability to learn, focus, and succeed in school is something that should not be taken lightly. Moreover, fluoride can accumulate in the body over time. It's not just a concern for kids who drink tap water regularly, but also infants who may be consuming formula made with fluoridated water. Fluoride builds up in the bones and tissues, and some studies have suggested that this could lead to weakened bones or other health complications as the children grow older. Along with the concerns of the tap water and the baby formula with the fluoridated water is a major concern regarding toothpaste. Let me ask you, would you give your child, or any child, anything that had a black box warning from the FDA on the toothpaste tubes? It quote, "If more than a pea size is ingested, call poison control immediately." This is on all fluoridated toothpastes. A recent astounding ruling on 9/24/24 by a federal judge, Senior Judge Edward Chen, found that the fluoridation of water at .7 milligrams per liter, which is a level presently considered optimal in the U.S., and I quote, "an unreasonable risk," end quote, "of reduced IQ in children." The court found that the ADA claims of safety were in fact not supported by evidence. It was also noted that even more worrisome, fluoride consumption is cumulative. Also, Dr. Ladipow, our Surgeon General, cited a study which found the association between exposure to fluoridated water and ADHD among children and adolescents ages six to 17. Well, for the past four years, I have been tutoring kids ages five to 11, and I am personally witnessing the ADHD at much higher levels, as well as significantly...
Thank you, Ms. Potts. Appreciate your comments. The next three speakers, Amanda Bruno, Laura Hartman, and then Jeffrey Coebs.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Debbie Potts, and I am a former Hillsborough County teacher. I spent 33 years focused on the well-being and development of children. And today, I want to address something that has been a part of public policy for decades, but has also sparked a lot of debate, and that is the fluoride in our water. Fluoride has been added to the water supplies in an effort to prevent tooth decay. On the surface, that seems like a great thing, healthier teeth for our kids, fewer cavities, and less burden in families. But as a teacher, I've seen the effects that go beyond just dental health, and I think it's important that we also look at the potential negative side of this widened practice. Though the amounts of fluoride added to the water are considered safe by many authorities, recent research has suggested there might be more serious risks to children's development. Over 70 studies have shown that high fluoride exposure may be linked to lower IQs in children, especially in areas with naturally high levels of fluoride in the water. As a teacher, I know how crucial cognitive development is, and any factor that could affect a child's ability to learn, focus, and succeed in school is something that should not be taken lightly. Moreover, fluoride can accumulate in the body over time. It's not just a concern for kids who drink tap water regularly, but also infants who may be consuming formula made with fluoridated water. Fluoride builds up in the bones and tissues, and some studies have suggested that this could lead to weakened bones or other health complications as the children grow older. Along with the concerns of the tap water and the baby formula with the fluoridated water is a major concern regarding toothpaste. Let me ask you, would you give your child, or any child, anything that had a black box warning from the FDA on the toothpaste tubes? It quote, "If more than a pea size is ingested, call poison control immediately." This is on all fluoridated toothpastes. A recent astounding ruling on 9/24/24 by a federal judge, Senior Judge Edward Chen, found that the fluoridation of water at .7 milligrams per liter, which is a level presently considered optimal in the U.S., and I quote, "an unreasonable risk," end quote, "of reduced IQ in children." The court found that the ADA claims of safety were in fact not supported by evidence. It was also noted that even more worrisome, fluoride consumption is cumulative. Also, Dr. Ladipow, our Surgeon General, cited a study which found the association between exposure to fluoridated water and ADHD among children and adolescents ages six to 17. Well, for the past four years, I have been tutoring kids ages five to 11, and I am personally witnessing the ADHD at much higher levels, as well as significantly...
Thank you, Ms. Potts. Appreciate your comments. The next three speakers, Amanda Bruno, Laura Hartman, and then Jeffrey Coebs.
Good morning.
Good morning. Honorable Commissioners, my name is Amanda Bruno. I'm an herbalist and a wellness ambassador in my community, dedicated to helping people take control of their health through natural holistic approaches. But today, I am here as something more. I am a woman who has been deeply affected by a system that has stripped me of choice, a taxpayer demanding answers, and a citizen fighting for the right to make informed decisions about what goes into my body. I have been struggling with fertility, a devastating emotional and deeply personal battle. It is a battle that far too many individuals and couples are facing today. And while I cannot stand here and say with certainty that fluoride is the cause, no one can prove to me that it isn't. That uncertainty alone should be enough to make us pause and ask, why are we forcing this on the public? For decades, fluoride has been added to our water under the assumption that it benefits public health. But the science is shifting. Studies now show fluoride disrupts the endocrine system, impacting thyroid function, one of the most crucial regulators of the reproductive health. The National Toxicology Program has reviewed evidence linking fluoride to lower fertility rates, hormonal imbalance, and even fetal development issues. Why is this not being openly discussed? Why are we not questioning whether this outdated policy is harming more than it's helping? As an herbalist, I have dedicated my life to educating people about what they put into their bodies. But how can I educate? How can I empower when I myself am being stripped of choice? When fluoride is in our water, it is in our tea, it's in our food, our coffee, it's everywhere. This is not informed consent, this is forced exposure. And so, as a taxpayer, I am demanding answers. I demand to know the true necessity of fluoride in our water supply. If it cannot be proven beyond doubt to be both safe and essential, then why are we being subjected to it? Why am I? Why are we all being made to bear the risk without a choice? The people of this county deserve transparency, we deserve autonomy, and we deserve policies that protect us, not ones that force chemicals into our bodies without consent. I urge you to reexamine this policy, look at the science, and most importantly, listen to the people you serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno. Laura Hartman, followed by Jeffrey Coebs, and then Pat Metcalf. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Laura Hartman. I oppose adding fluoride to the water. Fluoridation is medicine without consent. Let me give some of my background so you understand more. I'm a post-9/11 combat veteran, a former press secretary at America Frontline Nurses, one of the founders of America Frontline Nurses, and I research nurse at Frontline Defense Supplement. My current area of focus is functional medicine and soft tissue cancer, aka turbo cancer, where we're using CBD with THC and CBD without THC. There's three ways that this is currently violating medical freedom. Fluoride is not safely dosed. That is actually uncontrolled exposure. So if it's, if you were to prescribe it, the dose would be based on the weight, the patient's history, are they a newborn, or they have one kidney, both kidneys? Do they drink gallons of water while they're outside? We don't know this. So because it can't be dosed, it is dangerous. Beside the point that has already been brought up, that it is not FDA-approved for ingestion. The second one is that there's no informed consent. Medical ethics requires individuals to choose what substance they consume. Fluoride forces us, and we don't have an opt-out option. If a nurse were to administer it, they'd be faced with, if a nurse administered it without full consent, they would lose their license and/or face medical malpractice. So why is it acceptable for elected officials to do this on a mass scale? The third one is science is shifting. Fluoride is classified as neurotoxins in high doses. Study includes the ones of the Florida Surgeon General has, that I've printed off, that I will submit and leave here for your understanding. It does lower IQ, it does affect the thyroid dysfunction, and it does create serious other health concerns. Our Florida Surgeon General opposes the mass medication. His authority in fluoride is undeniable. Let me give you some of his background in case you're not aware. He's a licensed physician, as in a medical doctor. He's also trained at Harvard Medical University. His second degree from Harvard is a PhD in health policy, making him an expert in the health policy research, evidence-based medicine, and healthcare policy. He was also a professor at UCLA School of Medicine. He is nationally recognized for his work. He is an expert in evidence-based medicine and has been published multiple times in peer-reviewed studies. Dr. Joseph Ladipow is, I'm sorry, Dr. Joseph Ladipow has recently warned the public that his mandates are rooted in personal choice, informed consent, and scientific data. If you read his book, you'll understand that empathy is the difference between healing and suffering.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Appreciate the comments. Jeffrey Coebs, followed by Pat Metcalf, and then Angel Ramos.
Good morning, council members. I'm Jeffrey Coebs, Deputy Director for the Foundation of Freedom, and I'm here, like many of you people, perhaps, I didn't know why we had fluoride in our water, or what would be wrong with having fluoride in your water. At the turn of the 19th century, we had 30% of all the cars in New York City were battery-powered. We didn't have fluoride in our water. And at some point, all this sort of got flipped around. And interestingly enough, how we got to that point, basically, when we started producing aluminum as an offshoot of steel industry and the use of potash, the off-grade of what they were producing created some toxins that ended up getting thrown down the river. Down the river, we ended up with horses with five hooves and two heads, and people started looking for why that happened. So they went upstream, found the guys who were dumping the stuff in the water, and said, rates, hormonal imbalance, and even fetal development issues. Why is this not being openly discussed? Why are we not questioning whether this outdated policy is harming more than it's helping? As an herbalist, I have dedicated my life to educating people about what they put into their bodies. But how can I educate? How can I empower when I myself am being stripped of choice? When fluoride is in our water, it is in our tea, it's in our food, our coffee, it's everywhere. This is not informed consent, this is forced exposure. And so, as a taxpayer, I am demanding answers. I demand to know the true necessity of fluoride in our water supply. If it cannot be proven beyond doubt to be both safe and essential, then why are we being subjected to it? Why am I? Why are we all being made to bear the risk without a choice? The people of this county deserve transparency, we deserve autonomy, and we deserve policies that protect us, not ones that force chemicals into our bodies without consent. I urge you to reexamine this policy, look at the science, and most importantly, listen to the people you serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno. Laura Hartman, followed by Jeffrey Cobs, and then Pat Metcalf. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Laura Hartman. I oppose adding fluoride to the water. Fluoridation is medicine without consent. Let me give some of my background so you understand more. I'm a post-9/11 combat veteran, a former press secretary at America Frontline Nurses, one of the founders of America Frontline Nurses, and I research nurse at Frontline Defense Supplement. My current area of focus is functional medicine and soft tissue cancer, aka turbo cancer, where we're using CBD with THC and CBD without THC. There's three ways that this is currently violating medical freedom. Fluoride is not safely dosed. That is actually uncontrolled exposure. So if it's, if you were to prescribe it, the dose would be based on the weight, the patient's history, are they a newborn, or they have one kidney, both kidneys? Do they drink gallons of water while they're outside? We don't know this. So because it can't be dosed, it is dangerous. Beside the point that has already been brought up, that it is not FDA-approved for ingestion. The second one is that there's no informed consent. Medical ethics requires individuals to choose what substance they consume. Fluoride forces us, and we don't have an opt-out option. If a nurse were to administer it, they'd be faced with, if a nurse administered it without full consent, they would lose their license and/or face medical malpractice. So why is it acceptable for elected officials to do this on a mass scale? The third one is science is shifting. Fluoride is classified as neurotoxins in high doses. Study includes the ones of the Florida Surgeon General has, that I have printed off, that I will submit and leave here for your understanding. It does lower IQ, it does affect the thyroid dysfunction, and it does create serious other health concerns. Our Florida Surgeon General opposes the mass medication. His authority in fluoride is undeniable. Let me give you some of his background, in case you're not aware. He's a licensed physician, as in a medical doctor. He's also trained at Harvard Medical University. His second degree from Harvard is a PhD in health policy, making him an expert in the health policy research, evidence-based medicine, and healthcare policy. He was also a professor at UCLA School of Medicine. He is nationally recognized for his work. He is an expert in evidence-based medicine and has been published multiple times in peer-reviewed studies. Dr. Joseph Ladipow is, I'm sorry, Dr. Joseph Ladipow has recently warned the public that his mandates are rooted in personal choice, informed consent, and scientific data. If you read his book, you'll understand that empathy is the difference between healing and suffering.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Appreciate the comments. Jeffrey Cobs, followed by Pat Metcalf, and then Angel Ramos.
Good morning, council members. I'm Jeffrey Cobs, Deputy Director for the Foundation of Freedom, and I'm here, like many of you people, perhaps, I didn't know why we had fluoride in our water, or what would be wrong with having fluoride in your water. At the turn of the 19th century, we had thirty percent of all the cars in New York City were battery-powered. We didn't have fluoride in our water. And at some point, all this sort of got flipped around. And interestingly enough, how we got to that point, basically, when we started producing aluminum as an offshoot of steel industry and the use of potash, the off-grade of what they were producing created some toxins that ended up getting thrown down the river. Down the river, we ended up with horses with five hooves and two heads, and people started looking for why that happened. So they went upstream, found the guys who were dumping the stuff in the water, and said, "Hey, what are you guys dumping in the water?" "Nothing, just dumping stuff in the water." "Well, you gotta stop it." "Why?" "Because there's horses with two heads and five hooves down here, and we don't want to have that." "Oh, well, what do you want us to do with it?" "Well, we want you to put it in barrels and put it and pay somebody to take it off, put it in the desert, be somebody else's problems." By the way, just really quickly, how many of you broke a bone as a kid? Anybody break an arm or a leg? You know, just pretty common. So where we got to was, the people didn't want to pay those exorbitant amount of money, and they decided they would try to do something about it, which was to bring in a spin doctor, which was Edward Bernays. Edward Bernays is the father of modern spin doctoring. He was in the twenties and thirties, he actually consulted with Goebbels and the German propaganda movement, and they said, "Hey, what do we need to do?" "Well, there's a problem." "I don't understand, what is, what is the problem?" "Well, we've got something that's in the stuff that we're putting down the river, and they don't like it, and people are getting two heads and five hooves, and, well, what is in it?" And he looked, and they looked at the first list of, and fluoride was on there. "Well, what is fluoride good for?" "Two heads, five hooves, apparently." "He goes, 'Anything else?'" "Well, in its pure form, it's good for bones." "Well, how do you show bones?" "'Cause you got skin on..." "Teeth." So the wealthy elites who were dumping this down the river, he said, "Well, this is, what do we do? You go and you take, you do a study, you make sure the study is in your favor, you take that study and you use that to push this forward. Eventually, people not only be allowing you to do this, but you can put it and sell it to them to put in their water." That's how we got to the point where we are. It got put in your water, the medical studies were falsified, and this has been used forever and ever and ever. And again, it's in your toothpaste. I don't use it in my toothpaste. I don't want to use it in my toothpaste. I don't have to, but you put it in my water. And I can filter it out, and I pay to filter it out of my drinking water, but it's really expensive to filter out of my shower water, and I'd really like you to get it the heck out of the shower water. The reason I asked you about the bones is, did you ever have a doctor give you fluoride for a broken bone? No, because it doesn't do any good for your bones. They sold it here for teeth.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Pat Metcalf, followed by Angel Ramos, and then David Coleman. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Pat Metcalf. My background includes working as a critical care nurse, a pharmaceutical sales rep, an adjunct professor of nursing, and I have a nurse practitioner degree. I also worked in hospital management. So I fully recognize the need to critically examine the efficacy and safety of drugs. Do the risk of a drug clearly outweigh the benefits? Pertaining to fluoride, there are significant risks, especially with children and pregnant women, and as our Surgeon General, Dr. Ladipow, has clearly noted. After much research, I am stunned that our county has a fluoride product in our water system that's not only a drug, but it's a neurotoxin. The FDA classifies fluoride as a drug. Yes, fluoride is a medicine or a medical treatment. It is not pharmaceutical grade, and FDA has never approved fluoride for the prevention of tooth decay. Also, fluoride does nothing to improve the quality of water. I have a copy of Hillsborough County Safety Data Sheet by Univar Solutions with information about hydrofluoric acid in our water system. Looking at the first page of the report, there's a hazard pictogram of a skull and crossbones. And classification for fluorosilic acid is ranked category four for acute oral toxicity. It's labeled harmful if swallowed. Take a moment and reflect on that. Harmful if swallowed. So it's well-established on paper that fluoride product is a harmful drug that our citizens are swallowing. According to Floridist Patient Bill of Rights, statute 381.026, patients are required to be provided informed consent and the ability to opt out if they choose. Our citizens are denied this right with fluoride. In addition, unlike other drugs where the dosage is specific, water fluoridation provides no ability to control the dose. Forced fluoridation on the public without informed consent is both unethical and unjustifiable. Let me explain simply about fluoride. The Dental Association may maintain that fluoride is a naturally occurring mineral. Yes, but the fluorosilic acid in our water system is not naturally occurring fluoride. It is a man-made molecule that eats through concrete, glass, stainless steel, fiberglass, and plastic. It's an industrial waste byproduct from the phosphate, fertilizer, and aluminum industries. This industrial waste is a toxin that is harmful if swallowed. How disturbing is it that these industries place this toxic industrial waste in our water system, and we're paying them to do this? Fluoridealert.org is an excellent website, and this undisputed evidence of the harm of fluoride, such as it can increase the incidence of cancer, disrupt the immune system, cause thyroid disorders, sleep disorders, Alzheimer's, increased arthritis. My son got dental fluorosis after a fluoride dental treatment, and his front teeth are permanently discolored. If a citizen wants to choose to have fluoride, it's readily available in toothpaste, mouthwash, and prescription. It's also, believe it or not, in some drugs like Prozac, Flonase, some statins and inhaled anesthetics. Even some tea drinks contain high levels of fluoride. I ask that you vote yes to remove fluorosilic acid, a known neurotoxin, from our water system.
Thank you, Ms. Metcalf. Angel Ramos, Angel Ramos, followed by David Coleman, and then Matthew Taylor. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Angel Ramos, and I'm here today to urge you to take immediate action to halt the fluoridation of our public water systems. This is a matter of public health, ethics, and government accountability. On September 24, 2024, a federal judge ruled that the fluoridation of water at .7 milligrams per liter, the level currently deemed optimal, poses an unreasonable risk to children's cognitive development. After a seven-year court battle with leading experts on both sides, the EPA has been ordered to eliminate this risk. Florida's own Surgeon General, Dr. Joseph Ladopple, has also spoken out. On November 22, 2024, he issued guidance against public water fluoridation, calling it public health malpractice. His position is based on numerous studies linking fluoride exposure to reduced IQ, thyroid dysfunction, ADHD, skeletal fluorosis, and developmental issues in children. The National Toxicology Program, in its August 2024 report, confirmed that fluoride at just 1.5 milligrams per liter causes neurodevelopmental harm. Yet, under the EPA's own safety standards, the community fluoridation should be no higher than 1.15 milligrams per liter, which is far below the current levels. Most water already contains this amount naturally, meaning there is no justification for adding more. Unlike chlorine, which treats water, fluoride is added to treat people, making it a medical intervention. And yet, the people of Hillsborough County have not given informed consent. There is no risk-benefit analysis, no ability to opt out, and no legal or ethical basis for mass medicating the public without their consent. Let's be clear, the fluoride added to our water is not pharmaceutical grade. It is a toxic byproduct captured from industrial pollution scrubbers. It accumulates in the body over time and often contains harmful contaminants like arsenic and lead. This is not natural fluoride. It is industrial waste product being added to our drinking water. Most of the world rejects water fluoridation. More than twenty counties in Florida do not fluoridate their water, and the number is growing. Just this past year, six additional cities and counties ended fluoridation, and you can too. Low-income families suffer the most. They cannot afford expensive filtration systems to remove fluoride. Babies and children are especially vulnerable, as fluoride is said to cross the placenta and the blood-brain barriers. The very communities fluoride is supposed to help are the ones at most risk of its harm. Let's not forget Florida's Patient Bill of Rights. Under Florida statute 381.026, medical treatment requires informed consent. Fluoridation violates this law, plain and simple. Commissioners, the solution is simple: pause fluoridation now. If you wish to open a discussion for further debate, in my opinion, you should do so after fluoridation has ended, now while the public remains exposed. The people of Hillsborough County deserve clean... That was my timer.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Appreciate the remarks.
Thank you.
David Coleman, followed by Matthew Taylor, and then Beth Alvarez. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dave Coleman, and what a display. Too bad one of you Commissioners didn't take up the mantle of rate hikes and flood the room with opinions. I'm really sad that the doctors left too early and missed this show. Anyway, good morning. And I did want to speak about, hey, look over here, fluoride. Let's get the news media here. I saw it on Channel Eight this morning. What is the golden age to you? Are kids out in the lower-income areas with yellow teeth? Anyway, meanwhile, it's ethical, unethical business as usual. Let's just slide the repeal of sunshine laws in someplace nobody notices. Lady, you will discuss the CEO, Bonnie Wise's pay. Is it 400 or 500K this year? That's fine if things were more transparent here. In A1, how much notice and advertisement is there for a public hearing? Please write items in language that we can all understand. In A2, I haven't got a clue of what any of it means for seniors. I have asked about your flag money slush funds. How much is each Commissioner getting, and where are these handouts going? This year, as last year, you have $180 million for affordable housing, yet probably as last year, I haven't looked on the detailed thing. A couple of pages of pictures and no explanation about where it is. At this year's budget presentation, I got a glimpse of the $2 billion savings slash fluid money account that I had been asking about for eighteen months. And apparently, as it was during the presentation, he said that it has waned from 24% of the $10 billion to 20%, which means that, and without any effect to our AAA rating. So in other words, you could drop it from the 24% to 20, and that would be $400 million you could write a check for tomorrow when you say that you don't have money to fix roads or other necessary items. I really want more accountability and information about where our money is, where the $10 billion So you could drop it there. Grace Point has medical doctors now in A20. In A27, 2.5 million for a company to submit requests for funds.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
I have plenty more.
Matthew Taylor, followed by Beth Alvarez, and then Anita Stewart, who's virtual. Good morning.
January 15, 2025, this board unanimously approved the Hillsborough County State Legislative Agenda. Not one initiative in this agenda would help Hillsborough County constituents. Quite literally, you're going to use our tax dollars to lobby the state legislator to help yourselves and developer buddies. $5 million for a new art and culture center, really? Do you realize how many people flooded during the hurricanes from your reckless rubber stamping of development projects? Why is there no agenda items to deepen the retention ponds, clean the ditches and the creeks across the counties that flooded roads and neighborhoods during this hurricane? The biggest failure of this legislative agenda was the sunshine law exemption for county commissioners. This item angered many residents, however, the lies from each of you have now infuriated residents. Commissioner Simpita, you sponsored this exemption, and when residents pushed back against it, you told us you needed that exemption to prevent human trafficking. How does a blanket public record exemption for county commissioners help prevent human trafficking? This item helps conceal the backdoor deals between commissioners and developers. Now let's get to the lies you all told residents. Simpita, you told me that the Tampa Times wrote a very deceptive article about this exemption. However, I saw this document on the county's website. Maybe next time, don't send a generic carbon copy email as a response to residents when you try to attempt to take their right to transparency away from them. Commissioner Wustel, you sent an email to residents stating that you didn't support this sunshine law exemption. This was after the pushback from residents. Your true feelings about this agenda item were completely different. You took to social media and said the sunshine law is used to empower dark, behind-the-scenes swamp creatures. So residents who submit public records are viewed as swamp creatures? Boy, that makes you sound really unethical. Commissioner Miller, you said you would be in contact with the county's attorney's office to gain additional background and historical context on the law. So you don't understand Florida's public record law? How are you a county commissioner if you don't understand the most basic state laws? The rest of this board couldn't be bothered to explain their position. If you want to take steps to prevent human trafficking, start within this bureaucracy. Recently, the Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Captain was arrested on 100 counts of child pornography. The failures don't stop there. Last August, another Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Lieutenant and his wife were arrested with, for sexual activity with a minor. The trafficking you claim to be preventing is right under your nose, and it's being perpetuated by county employees, and you've done nothing to address it. If you would all just do right by the people you're supposed to represent, you wouldn't need them metal detectors over there at the entrance. I'm Matthew Wilder. God bless America, and I really wish you bureaucrats would stop trampling all over our rights.
Excuse me, could you put your name on the record?
Matthew Taylor.
The next three speakers, Beth Alvarez, followed by Anita Stewart and Carmen Edmonds, who are both virtual.
Good morning. My name is Isbeth Alvarez. I've been advocated to fight for the toxicity of the water for years in Florida. No one can deny that high natural levels of fluoride damage health. The real question is whether there is an adequate margin of safety between the doses shown to cause harm in published studies and the total dose of fluoride that people consume in uncontrolled amounts of fluoridated water. The poor people are more likely to suffer from poor nutrition, and those more likely to be more vulnerable to fluoride's toxic effect. Unfortunately, the poor are being targeted by new fluoridation programs. Particularly, Black and Hispanic children are more vulnerable to fluoride toxicity. According to the CDC National Survey, Black and Mexican-American children have a significantly higher rate of dental fluorosis than white children. I am most deeply concerned for the poor families who have babies. If they cannot afford unfluoridated waters for their baby's milk formula, do their babies not count? Of course they do. This is an issue of fairness, silver rights, and compassion. Pregnant women and children may be receiving more fluoride than necessary due to the fluoride exposure from multiple sources, including treated water, treated public water. What is skeletal fluorosis? Skeletal fluorosis is a biomarker of overexposure to fluoride during a critical time in childhood development. Once fluoride gets into the blood, it is free to react with the calcium that is in your bones to form calcium fluoride. This depletes the natural calcium that contributes the bone density, thus making your bones more brittle. Symptoms of skeletal fluorosis, and myself, stiff joints or tritis, calcification ligaments. The CDC National Health and Nutrition Examination Survey has consistently found skyrocketing rates of dental fluorosis. The CDC is not warning Black and Mexican-American children that they have higher rates of dental fluorosis compared to Caucasian children. Black American children have higher rates of lactose intolerance, kidney problems, and diabetes, all which may exacerbate fluoride's toxicity. Also, the highest rates of tooth decay can be found in low-income areas which have their water fluoridated for many years. Because of this information presented to you, I respectfully ask you to stop fluoride in our water system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Next speaker is Anita Stewart, virtual.
Hi, my name is Anita Stewart. I'm a veteran. I served on the Hillsborough County Soil and Water Board from 2010 to 2015. I currently live in Zephyr Hills, but I'm a longtime resident of the Tampa Bay area. I still work in Tampa. I've been an advocate for clean water for a really long time, from hands across the sand to stopping the core exit, spraying in the Gulf of Mexico after the Gulf Oil disaster, and working with others to stop the Sable Trail Pipeline, which is now going right over the Green Swamp, which is the watershed for all of Tampa Bay's drinking water. It's not a question of if the pipeline will leak, but when. Our water is in such bad shape here in Tampa that it's common knowledge that if you go out to eat at one of our restaurants, the servers will put lemon in the water so customers won't smell the chemicals. So we're here today to talk about fluoride. Fluoride is an industrial waste that comes from the phosphate industry. It's being added to our water, and most of the population can't consent to it because they don't even realize that it's happening. The latest science doesn't prove that fluoride prevents tooth decay, and indeed, it can cause illness and neurological disorders, especially among the most vulnerable among us, children, pregnant women, and the elderly. If you're giving medicines to people without their consent, well, the three things you're supposed to do is you're supposed to inform them, you're supposed to give them a way to opt out, and everyone should be following the ethical guideline of doing no harm. Please consider removing the fluoride from our water completely. And people want to be the ones making decisions on what medicines they take. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Next up is Carmen Edmonds, who's virtual, followed by Kirk Christensen, and then Natalie Carbostillo, I believe. Ms. Edmonds, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Carmen Edmonds, and as someone who worked in healthcare for 20 years, I can say technology has made many great advances to help people live longer and have a better quality of life. But being in the healthcare field has also afforded me the curiosity to dig deep into certain things that have also made me question why we are doing what we are doing concerning public health and the areas of food additives. Fluoride is one of those areas I've done deep dives into the effects... Fluoride is one of those areas I've done deep dives into the effects of and as to the why we are adding it to water. What we once thought healthy and good for us, we have now learned is bad for our bodies, bad for our environment, and can pose long-term health risks to all of us. What is added to our drinking water is hydrofluoracetic acid. This is not a natural substance, but rather a waste product from manufacturing processes. This chemical, deemed healthy for many years, has now been found to cause severe, it caused several health problems. It can affect thyroid function, bone and teeth can begin to soften, it is associated with a loss of IQ and can be aggravated, um, can be an aggravating factor to ADHD. Many other countries and now states and local governments are removing this harmful chemical from their drinking water. We ask that the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners vote today to remove fluoride from our drinking water. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds. Kirk Christensen, followed by Natalie, looks like it's Carbostillo, and then Ashley Tate. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kirk Christensen, retired Army States Army Lieutenant Colonel, retired career intelligence officer, and a medical freedom activist here in the Tampa Bay area. The good news is Florida's leading the way in eliminating fluoride from our water supply. Currently, 41 counties in Florida do not fluoridate. Since the Florida Certain General issued guidance on November 12th, more than 12 cities have rejected fluoride and are making decisions on their own. Thankfully, we live in a state that values constitutional rights and personal freedoms. In Florida, individuals have the constitutional right to refuse medical treatment regardless of their health condition. This right to privacy is explicitly stated in Article 1, Section 23 of the Florida Constitution. Our state also provides vaccine exemptions, yet public fluoridation offers no option to opt out. Florida Statute 381 dot 026 codifies the need for informed consent or the option to opt out. Justice Governor DeSantis ended the COVID-19 vaccine mandates, leaving the decision to the individual. We should do the same with fluoride. Some will argue that fluoride is not a drug. That is blatantly false. According to the FDA, fluoride, when used as a treatment or prevention of disease, dental disease, is a drug that is subject to FDA regulation. We cannot ignore the risk, nor can we justify fluoride use simply because it's been done for decades. New research has raised serious concerns. We cannot outsource our critical thinking to bureaucratic agencies that repeatedly failed in healthcare guidance over the past four years. At the heart of the debate is body sovereignty. Should our government engage in mass medication, deciding what is best for the public and ministering it through our water supply? As Ronald Reagan warned, the most terrifying words in English language are, "I'm from the government, and I'm here to help." Commissioners, I know you deeply care about the citizens and take your oath to protect them seriously. The research, the court rulings, and state recommendations have been presented to you. The only responsible course of action is to end public fluoridation. Let's protect our babies, our children, and pregnant mothers. Let's help prevent fluoride-related health issues such as brittle bones, hip fractures, and even Alzheimer's. That's come from the accumulation in the body. I ask you to vote yes in this right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Natalie Carbostillo, and Ashley Tate, and then Bonnie Hoffman. Good morning.
Hello, I am Dr. Natalie Carbostillo. I'm a practicing pediatric dentist, and I differ in a lot of the speakers that have spoke before me in that I live in Hillsborough County and I practice in Hillsborough County. I practice in Riverview, Florida. I've practiced in Bush Boulevard, on, uh, in Brandon, Riverview, West Chase, Wesley Chapel, Carrollwood. Um, I think that's most of the places that I've practiced. I have volunteered thousands of hours to treat uninsured and low-income children in Hillsborough County as well as in Florida. I am very respectful of the diverse opinions that we've heard here today, and I think that we should explore all viewpoints. I request that a workshop where all experts and interested individuals can attend to speak to the pros and the cons of water fluoridation. Dental decay is five to seven times more common than asthma. It is one of the most common reasons that children miss school. I have worked, um, with children in and out of areas with fluoride. What I have noticed that children who live in an area that is non-fluoridated, their cavities are deeper and they are more rampant than children who live in an area where fluoride is in the water supply. Yes, we can, as someone said, give fluoride prescriptions to children who don't live in a water fluoridated area, but also what is not said is that we can also remove fluoride from our own water supply by putting a reverse osmosis filter into our home. The thing that I think is, um, important to notice is that there's a website called dhmo.org. I think that we've heard about websites that give us all the pros and cons of fluoride. DHMO, dihydrogen monoxide. Since we're talking about water, most of us should know that water, H2O, dihydrogen mono-oxygen. And in this website, it talks about the dangers of dihydrogen monoxide and why we should stop using water. In those, it says that there's death due to accidental inhalation. Yes, if you inhale water, it will kill you. It talks about the gas burning us severely. Yes, if we put our hand in vapor, it will burn us. It talks that it's found in biopsy of cancerous tissues. Yes, it is found in the biopsy of cancerous tissues, as 70% of the body is water. It leads to corrosion and erosion. Yes, water leads to corrosion and erosion. That doesn't mean that we should stop using water. In fact, we can't live without it. I think that as a dentist, I am committed to looking at all the risks and the benefits, but I don't think that a last-minute hearing where it is not publicized is the place we need a workshop.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Ashley Tate, followed by Bonnie Hoffman. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ashley Tate, and I am a board-certified pediatric dentist. Um, I do want to advocate for keeping fluoride in our water. Um, I do respect all sides of this debate. I know it is very polarizing. Um, speaking from a dental perspective, the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry does affirm that fluoride in drinking water at the current recommended level, which is 0.7 parts per million, is both safe and effective at preventing and controlling dental decay and disease. This is also affirmed by the American Dental Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the American Medical Association. Um, I know with the National Toxicology Report, that did bring about, um, a lot of potential risks involved with fluoride in water. The thing with that being that these studies were done internationally in other countries and also looking at, um, areas that were endemic for having extremely high concentrations of fluoride in their water, which is higher than what we currently have here. Um, as far as fluoride in water goes, there's more than 65 years of research. There aren't any current legitimate peer-reviewed studies in the United States of America that are showing evidence of fluoride negatively impacting the IQ of children. Um, fluoride can be adjusted, of course, and it has, that has been taken into consideration over the years when fluoride toothpaste and topical varnishes have come out and been made available. They did decrease the level to the 0.7, and even with these new additions and other ways to get it, this is still found to be the most cost-effective way to reach the most amount of people. Um, they did do studies in Canada in 2011 where fluoride was removed, and they did look at how that affected these places, and the dental decay and disease did rise significantly, and similar studies were done later in the U.S. Is that my time?
Forty-four seconds.
Okay, I heard a beep. Um, I would say the biggest risk that actually has been seen in studies is the mild fluorosis, which is the white flecks on the teeth, which is a cosmetic concern for some people. Uh, it actually does make the teeth more resistant to decay, uh, but just weighing out, you know, that potential risk with all of the benefits that fluoride brings, I think it's also trying to remember before we've had water fluoridation for so many years now, which has helped, but before we have had that, you know, dental decay has been a big issue. Um, and I am concerned that even what I see in the practice that I work at now with fluoride in water is already alarming, you know, to your olds who need
Thank you.
all of their teeth taken out, so.
Appreciate your comments. Uh, last two speakers this morning, Bonnie Hoffman and then George Nieman. No Bonnie? Okay, George Nieman, and then followed by Yvette Nieman.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and public people who are viewing this. My name is George Nieman. I live in Dover. I am next to the former Sydney Phosphate Mine. I'm here to talk about that this morning. I'm also one of the leaders of a coalition that we formed called Fix Hillsborough. There is a document, I'm going to read a piece of it to, to you. It was done by an engineer. This is in the 80s. What we're, we've started discovering, uh, because they want to develop and put homes and buildings and commercial, retail, office, medical offices, daycare centers on the former phosphate mine. We're discovering that there's a lot of danger with this former phosphate mine, and we hope that the county doesn't blindly just say, "Well, it's revenue, let's just put homes on contaminated land." This is one of the documents. We've, we've discovered that even where I live in Dover Woods, they put contaminated sand, the clay sand, from the former phosphate mining operation all over my subdivision. So our homes are on top of contaminated land. We're learning all of this, and people are scared to death, and we, we want you to use prudence when this comes up next week for approval. You better think about this. This is what an engineer said, because the, the owners who were, who were proposing the development, they're saying, "No, there's a toxic site, but that's being monitored." We're not talking about the toxic site. There's 3,000 acres, most of which was never tested. This engineer says, "Although the 1,760-acre portion of Sydney Mine west of Turkey Creek and south of Highway 60 had been completely mined by mid-1958, the plant continued to be used for tailings and waste clay disposal. Tailings are the debris that has uranium, and it gives off high concentration of radon, which is cancer-causing. At the Sydney Mine, 1,060 of the 1,760 acres were covered with clay wastes. The average thickness of the wastes is approximately 20 feet, representing a total volume of about 902 million cubic feet." So you've got contaminated debris spread all over this 3,000 acres, and I hope you're not going to look the other way, because it's a financial risk for all of us when you get sued and we have to pay settlements. Thank you.
Last speaker, Yvette Nieman. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yvette Nieman, I stand before you today as a concerned resident of Hillsborough County, deeply troubled by the proposed development of the former phosphate mine in Dover. This 3,000-acre site bordered by State Road 60, South Dover Road, Turkey Creek Road, and Durant Road has a history that warrants our utmost caution. Historically, this land served as the Sydney Phosphate Mine until the late 1950s. Post-mining, it became a dumping ground for various wastes, leading to its designation as a federal superfund site due to significant contamination. Notably, a 9.5-acre toxic waste area within this site has been under continuous monitoring by the EPA to assess the spread of hazardous substances. Recent proposals aim to transform this area into an energy industrial park, EIP, with plans to introduce residential housing up to 1,200 units alongside commercial and retail spaces. While development can signify progress, building homes on a former toxic waste site poses significant risks. The primary concern is the potential health hazards associated with residual contamination. Despite assurances that residential areas would be situated away from the most contaminated zones, the pervasive nature of pollutants like 1-4 dioxane, a carcinogenic chemical detected on the property, raises alarms. This contaminant is known for its rapid spread through groundwater, posing threats to our water supply and public health. Let's not confuse property rights with making sure that land speculators can somehow find another use of contaminated property. It is clear the applicant does not want to be a supplier of alternative energy, but that was the whole reason for allowing them to build non-energy uses. I urge the board to consider these significant risks. Prioritizing the health and safety of our community is paramount. Let us seek alternative solutions that do not compromise our well-being or the environment. I respectfully request that you oppose the proposed development on this contaminating site. Thank you for your attention and commitment to our community and its future.
Thank you, Ms. Nieman, for your comments. So that closes public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote, consent agenda. I don't have a button.
Motion carried 7 to 0.
All right, Bonnie, first item.
Thank you. We can go to the regular agenda. The first item is Item B1. This is to adopt a resolution relating to the Housing Finance Authority's single-family mortgage revenue bonds, and Mary Helen Ferris will present this item as well as Item B2.
Good morning, Mary Helen.
Good morning. Um, the first item, B1, is to approve the issuance by the Housing Finance Authority of no more than $200 million to fund single-family mortgages. These mortgages will be available for income-eligible first-time homebuyers. There are several counties are involved for economies of scale, and there's no county funds involved with this item.
Can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion Commissioner Cohen.
Second.
Second Commissioner Bowles, please accord your vote. Yes. Nope. Let's come in.
Commissioner Wustel voted no.
Okay, B2?
B2 is the approval of an issuance by the Housing Finance Authority of up to $16 million to fund multifamily mortgage revenue bonds to finance the construction of a 77-unit multifamily housing located on 5920 Robert Toll Drive in Riverview. This item does have county investment that was approved by the board on March 1st of 2023, a total investment of $7,634,900. Those funds were approved, as I said, by the board on March 1st, 2023. Those are the county funds that are involved. There's no county funds involved with the HFAs portion of this.
Okay, Commissioner Wustel.
Thank you. This is the funds that has, um, people's property taxes in it subsidizing developers, I believe, from the Hope Fund?
Um, I believe so. I think Cheryl Howell might be here if there's
Yeah, that's, that's okay, as long as I'm saying it correctly, and I, um, there is no Town Center Development Associates, associates, registered business in the state of Florida, even though that's what the backup says. So can we verify that it's actually Town Center Brandon Development Associates?
I'd be happy to look into that for you and get back to you, or we can defer the item if you'd like to.
Well, if, if, if it, if it is the actual right one, um, us being correct in the backup is helpful, because then I would have more easily been able to identify that this is actually Sean Wilson from Blue Sky Communities, which is the, um, main benefactor of grossly subsidizing their bottom line as a developer with working-class and low-income families' property taxes, and, and that, that is his company. So if it, if, if this is the, all of the same deal, and this is still the low-income families' property taxes paying down the bottom line of developers, I believe I voted no before, and I will still absolutely be a no today. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue. Uh, can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Uh, please accord your vote on B2.
Motion carried 5 to 2. Commissioners Commissioners Miller and Wolsel voted no.
Thank you.
Next item?
Thank you. The next item is item B3. This is to adopt proposed amendments to the 2025 Hillsborough County State Legislative Program, a request. Cameron Pennant will take you through these changes, and Brandon Wagner is here as well.
Good morning.
Good morning, county commissioners, county staff, members of the public. For the record, Cameron Pennant, Director of Government Relations for Hillsborough County. Before you today are updates to the 2025 state legislative agenda. Of note, we've got seven new items here before you. Of those, including in those seven new items are two, the first two are related to our Emergency Operations Center. They are to create new county emergency recovery facilities. The next two thereafter are improvements to the Emergency Operations Center. And then the last three are infrastructure projects. If approved by this board, this new legislative agenda would total $36.1 million. So leave it to the board for approval.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some of these, these came from our friends in Tallahassee, Representative Owen and Representative Hart, is that correct?
That is correct.
And which ones were, which came from which? Can you tell me?
Yes, I believe the first two came, a request from Representative Hart, wanting to see a response and concerns of how the county wanted to handle post-hurricane. And then I believe the ones from Representative Owen, I believe, are some of the infrastructure projects.
Okay. With, I'm getting feedback, would these also essentially, thank you, would these also essentially amend the priority list that we approved on the 15th?
It would be in addition to.
In addition to?
Yeah.
So therefore, kind of an amendment to what we've done?
That is correct.
So that amend, with this, so that whole priority list was attached as an item to this particular, to B3?
That is, could you rephrase that? I just want to make sure.
The entire priority list that we approved on the 15th is essentially attached as a...
That is correct.
As an example.
That is correct.
So with there's, with that being said, I'd like to, I don't know if this, maybe you can help out, Rick, a little bit, to the extent as far as parliamentary, can we discuss one of the other items on there?
On the, on the main legislative agenda?
Yes.
If I, we wanted to defer to proper protocol, because I'm not sure if we need to review this first, and then go to the original agenda, or however.
I'll make a motion that we accept this, but leave it open for discussion.
All right, so we're just gonna, we're gonna approve what's B3, and then it sounds like you want to revisit something, maybe from the last agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. Motion, Commissioner Bowles, second Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Miller. Do you have anything on the, on the motion?
My comments were the same as his. I wanted to just get something...
Okay, so we'll vote on this, and then we'll get back in the queue.
Yes, correct. Sorry for that.
Okay, no one else in the queue? Got a motion, a second? Please accord your vote on B3.
Motion carried six to zero.
All right, Commissioner Bowles.
Thank you. So, is someone else, is your mic open? Weird, sorry about that. Anyway, to the extent that we have been, there was some discussion earlier in the public comment, and I know we've gotten a lot of form stack emails regarding one of the items on there, specifically as it relates to the discussion and our approval under consent for the elimination of the sunshine law. And I think some of the public has maybe attacked all of us to some degree on our position on that. But whether it's misinformed, or poorly written, or whatever the case may be, I think that we need to have some talk, and maybe have an opportunity for either the original person who brought it forward to get on, you know, public record to discuss that. Personally, I'd like to see it either removed or changed, because I do not support the elimination of the sunshine law. But what I would support is maybe some tweaking, or some type of, some kind of language that addresses the particular and specific issues that my colleagues here have some concerns with. But I think the wholesale elimination of something that's been so sacred to our state is a problem. And again, provides some thoughts that we're doing something in dark rooms or whatnot, you know, smoky rooms with, you know, guys with cigars or what. So I don't think that's the case, but I would either like, for the, for the discussion, I'd like to at least make a motion that we, we strike that if someone else is not inclined to do so, and maybe a motion just for discussion, or a second.
Okay, so the motion by Commissioner Bowles is to, my understanding is to eliminate the...
Priority.
The one item regarding eliminating of the sunshine law.
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Cameron Spade, do you want to, I mean, you're third in the queue, but this was your item, so I'll refer to you.
And that's what I was hoping, so yes.
Yes, I would like to just read my response that I've had to everyone. And the reason why, as one of the speakers mentioned, is the same one to everybody's, because I didn't change my answer for somebody different that was responding to this. So, here we go. So this is my response that I sent out to everyone about that, is that I would like to address any concerns. This is not about reducing transparency, but rather advocating to improve the functionality of the decision-making process for commissioners and specific boards. Public trust is a priority, and mechanisms to ensure accountability would remain in place. Discussions under the current sunshine law can hinder effective communication, particularly Commission on Human Trafficking, where sensitive information needs to be handled cautiously. As a dedicated public servant, I value transparency, accountability, and the public's trust in government operations. Florida's sunshine law has been instrumental in ensuring openness and preventing corruption. However, certain circumstances call for thoughtful updates to improve efficiency and effectiveness while maintaining the integrity of the public process. There are sensitive matters such as combating human trafficking or improving inter-commissioner collaboration. The sunshine law limits informal discussions between commissioners, often reducing the time available to collaborate and develop well-rounded solutions. I believe allowing commissioners to engage in a more thorough and productive discussions on key issues outside of formal public meetings is in no way approving of fraud, waste, and public corruption. On boards like the Commission on Human Trafficking, where I serve, our ability to discuss strategy is crucial. Traffickers actively monitor anti-trafficking efforts, and public discussions can inadvertently expose our plans, jeopardizing their effectiveness. Limited private discussions would allow us to safeguard sensitive information while continuing to uphold our mission to protect the most vulnerable. Again, I'm not advocating for secrecy or reduced public oversight. We should have a commitment to maintaining the public's trust while addressing practical challenges faced by commissioners and boards. It does not condone fraud, waste, or corruption, but seeks to improve government functionality to better serve constituents of Hillsborough County and Floridians. The state legislature could engage with stakeholders, including the public and government transparency experts, to refine the Florida sunshine law and ensure its alignment with the values we hold dear. By making thoughtful updates to the sunshine law, we can strike a balance between transparency, efficiency, and security, enabling our boards and commissions to work more effectively for the people of Florida. Thank you.
All right, thank you. On the original motion, Commissioner Miller was, was in queue, followed by Commissioner Wolsel. She's indicated her button didn't work and asked to go next. So Commissioner Miller, if you want, go ahead.
Thank you. Mine is more about procedural concerns. I did bring it up to staff about the sunshine law and my uncomfortableness with it being in the entire policy. But out of respect to you, because you were just back from a bereavement leave, I didn't want to address it in the last meeting, and asked staff if I would have an opportunity to remove it in the future. And I was told yes. So then when I got the agenda for today, I was really surprised that it was sort of in there as an attachment. The names were removed. Like, in other words, it had your name attached to it, Commissioner Zapata. And so I was, out of respect, voting on the entirety of it's, of the whole that would go to Florida with your name on it, so that when I went and spoke, it was not attached. So I was understanding that we were going to have fully the option to have a discussion, to have that removed by a vote this meeting. And so that's important to me, that I was, I felt like a little misled on how procedurally this went, and I knew I can only go by what I'm told. And it was really out of respect to you, to have the opportunity to state your position on this, but I will not be supporting this in, in its entirety of the, of the policy.
Commissioner Wolsel?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a reason the state's legislature exempted themselves. They can talk amongst themselves and handle things privately that could be handled privately. And a lot of sunshine law is covered now anyways, because when it was written, Form 6s and Form 9s didn't exist, and now we have to be extremely transparent with our finances. Form 9s particularly have been extremely helpful to me recently. I've always treated this document as a courtesy. We've never really discussed it. It's been pushed through. I adamantly disagree with all of Commissioner Hagan's items. They're about subsidizing billionaires off of the back of the working class, and it's something I've openly advocated against since before I was an elected official, and still advocate against today. But hey, I have my property tax restriction issues on there. I have my exemptions from trip and fall on sidewalks, because I think it's preposterous that we force taxes out of people to build sidewalks, and then when we can't maintain them because of a tree root, then slip and fall attorneys come back to us, and then we spend more of people's property taxes on the attorneys that should have gone to fixing the ridiculous sidewalk. I mean, those are my issues, and maybe somebody disagreed with those. I disagree with Commissioner Myers' issue. Many members of the Black community and their leaders have reached out to me that they adamantly are opposed to her version of the Black History Museum, or I think they've changed the name now since the city of Tampa jumped ahead. But that's how I view this document. I don't agree with many of the items on it, and I don't imagine that some of the commissioners agree with maybe mine. So either way, you get to see all of our financial records on our Form 6s, and you get to see all of our gifts on our Form 9. So it doesn't really matter to me, but I would, I would caution everybody with a reminder that the moment you, what happens when you shine the sun on something is that you create a shadow, and that's what you should really be worried about. And things that we deal with, with all of the backdoor, behind-the-scenes actors that you don't have the privilege of dealing with, those are the swamp creatures that I refer to. So it's really whatever. I don't really support the document at all at this point, if, since we're picking and choosing. So I think that we should just have a motion to amend something previously adopted, Commissioner Miller, and then we can all just put our vote where our vote is, and that's the way, and then people can pick and choose and support whatever they want, not support the document as a whole. Not even, my, my actual item isn't even correct on the document. I didn't even look at it. I just was told that my requests were on there, but I only advocated for a half-cent sales tax, and I noticed after this item was pointed out to me, that's up to a cent. So it's, it's really, this document is kind of a nothing burger to me, because I don't think that many of the items on there are going to even be seriously considered, so.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. When we voted on this document, it, it was very apparent to me that some of the items were in black, which indicated to me that they were full-board items. And then there were a lot of items that had a commissioner's name next to them written in red. And when I voted on the document, I thought that that distinction left open some interpretation as to whether or not the board was behind the entire document, or the board was behind the parts of the document that were collective, and individual commissioner priorities were highlighted within. I agree with Commissioner Wolsel about something. I didn't agree with one of the items that, that, the way it's written, that he proposed. But I felt, because of the, the red ink, that it made it clear what was separate, what was not. I came to see after the vote that that probably was not right, that once we had adopted it, it really was the position of the whole board. So I welcome the opportunity now to clarify all this. On the issue of the sunshine, I understand exactly what Commissioner Cameron Zapata is saying. And I think the human trafficking example's a very good one. It's obvious that if they're going to sit and talk about the tactics and strategies they're using to combat human trafficking, it's probably not terribly helpful if the traffickers can listen to the conversation. What I would suggest, though, is that if that, if that's the problem that we want to solve, or that she wants to solve, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that perhaps a narrowly tailored request of the legislature to exempt certain proceedings of the Commission on Human Trafficking from the sunshine law might be a much easier way to accomplish it, and I would support if, if we wanted to put that item in, in our document. What I was going to suggest, though, is that we do, we're, we're going to have to do one of two things, I think, to clarify this. One thing that we could do is simply make the point that anything that's in red next to a commissioner's name is the position of that commissioner, and isn't necessarily supported by the whole board. Or we can do the, essentially redo the document, but then we're going to have to decide on what is the actual position of the board. And we'll have to vote on the items that there's a difference of opinion about. And I'm really comfortable with going either way, because I do think that, that we need to be clear on what we support, and we need to be clear with the public on what we support. But I do just want to say that I thought that the, the red ink did delineate a difference between what were individual commissioner items and what were board items. And I know in the future, we'll, we'll, I think, be clearer about that. So again, I'm happy to support something narrowly tailored on the human trafficking side, and I think we've got to go one way or the other in terms of clarifying what the board actually supports.
Okay, before calling Commissioner Bowles, for the purpose of today, the motion currently on the floor is, is to remove the elimination of sunshine law from our legislative priorities. And while I tend to agree with, with what Commissioner Cohen just stated, I think this item might, while, let me better explain that. I think there's probably a lot of items that individual commissioners may disagree with. However, my sense is there's either unanimous or near-unanimous support in either eliminating or tweaking this item. So for the purpose of today, I would suggest we remove the item. If we want to add on your suggestion on human trafficking, we should do that today. If we want to go item by item, we need to bring that back at a different meeting, which I have no problem voting on item by item. We used to do that on the flag list years ago. But I don't think that should, that should occur today. I think that should be at a, at a subsequent meeting. Commissioner Bowles?
Yeah, I, I don't, I agree with you on that. My intent in this particular item was not to go item by item. I know there's 30 of them, 25 of them on there. I don't think there's any use in doing that. But I wanted to at least give us the opportunity to talk about it, which this is one of those ways you can do that procedurally, and encourage you to vote no if you don't want to eliminate it. But if we want to tweak it, we can amend, you can amend my motion, which would be in order, I presume. And again, I wanted to at least give Commissioner Zapata the opportunity to talk about this and get her, you know, her message out, and also provide some context to that particular item. If we're going to do that, Commissioner Cohen, I would say that in the future, gentlemen, that if that legislative agenda gets moved off the draft and onto, that you keep the names on there. And I'm not sure why they, they were in red, as you were, but that was only in the draft document, on the final document, they were all removed. So then presumably, and again, I, I can't tell anybody what he wants to do, what I want to do, what any of us want. We were all elected to do a particular item for a particular purpose. But I'm not going to tell her no. Now, do I believe in it? That's not necessarily my, there's a lot of things I don't believe in, a lot of us do up here. But there are some that I do. So I can't, and I believe that she should have the... have the right to put forward, just as Commissioner Wostol can put his items forward. But if you're going to, in the final draft or the final document, that maybe those perils carry with it, just so that when the public, you know, can kind of, you know, because it looks like now we've got two different documents. And I know it said draft, but you kind of maybe have two different documents.
Commissioners, if I could offer just a bit of clarification on the process. Again, for the record, Brandon Wagner, Government Relations and State Services.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the discussion. When we put together the draft legislative program, we go through a number of processes to get to a document for you to consider. There's staff recommendations based on conversation with department heads and others, and the things that they need in order to do the job that they've been asked to do. There's also consultation with our contract lobbying team in Tallahassee or in Washington, depending on the program, on the issues that we believe are going to be on the table and that the board may want to consider in taking a position on. Then there's also consultation with you as individual commissioners, because at the end of the day, this is the board's document. So we come to you and ask, what is of interest to you? And so the document that was presented to you for consideration delineated those items that came from individual commissioners by name, so that you all knew where they were coming from. The things that were without name were staff. Now, going, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
And those were actually, most of those were actually pre-election. Is that correct?
Some of them were, yes. Now, we can do a better job going forward of delineating those things from staff perspective, staff recommendations. But the end of the day, they're strictly that, they're recommendations. We asked the board to approve the program so that we as staff can go execute that program and direct our contract teams to work it. If it's split into numerous sections, depending upon individual commissioners, that creates a bit of problem in Tallahassee, because we may have one commissioner who supports, we may have six who don't, and then it becomes a question of what's priority, what's not. What we asked the board to do is tell us what the board wants us to pursue or oppose in Tallahassee as a document. So after you get done approving it, we remove the names because it's now a board property, and we work from that point. As we've said before, the program can be amended at any time, for any reason, by this board. So if you wish to remove a particular item, absolutely, please do so. We will do our level best to pursue outcomes on all of these. We can't guarantee an outcome, but we will do our best effort. And so that's kind of how this got put together. We're open to suggestions on how to improve this process on a going-forward basis. We don't want to cause confusion or cause consternation. We try to make this as smooth as possible and give commissioners the voice in what those items are in the program. And we try to do that in one-on-one conversations. When we bring you a document, it's visible ahead of time what the suggestions were. If not, we'd be coming to you with staff recommendations and then trading back and forth here in the boardroom about a proposal and having not even seen it. So that's the way we've traditionally done it. Happy to have those conversations to improve the process on a going-forward basis. Appreciate the conversation and happy to answer any other questions you might have.
All right, thanks, Brandon. Commissioner Miller?
Mr. Reiner, procedurally, I was not consulted. My office was not. The first time I saw this document or was asked to contribute to the document, it was after it was received by my office as part of the board packet. And we discussed that already. So I just, I think procedurally, there probably needs to be a standard process that we can follow. Secondly, my question would be is, can we meet somewhere in the middle? So in other words, I think that we're like getting into semantics, right? Like approve the whole document, not approve the whole document, approve individual items, not. When the names were in there, according like to Commissioner Cohen, it did, it made sense to me. Like that was their item, and I felt like it was a respectful thing. Commissioner Wostol also addressed that, that we were saying, we're going to support them as fellow commissioners, that these are items that are important to them. Why can't we just leave their name in there? If it's a staff item, maybe that's where you would ask for full board approval for a staff item. I think that we're getting into sort of like the super details of this, and then the motion needs to reflect that. It could have saved a lot of us a lot of grief, per se, with all of the form stacks that were coming into us. I thought I was approving this document as a whole with the individual commissioners next to it, which would be difficult for the public to understand, because the motion was for us to approve the document, which then indicated that we were approving everything that lied in it. So I feel like this is just, it needs to be fixed, the whole thing. And I don't know that it can be done today, because I'm happy to leave, you know, approve a document with Commissioner Sapeta's important issue in there, so long as it's attached to her, that I'm able to sort of detach from it.
Commissioner Wostol?
I'm going to make two quick motions. Let's see what happens. I'm going to motion to amend the original document, original item from Commissioner Sapeta to exempt local governments from sunshine under discussions of human trafficking.
All right, so that's a substitute motion for Commissioner Bowles to amend the motion just to apply toward the Human Trafficking Board.
Commissioner Cohen, you look like...
If I may, what I was hoping for was perhaps an item asking that the Commission on Human Trafficking's discussions related to high-security issues be exempted. I'm very wary of starting to, at least without some further discussion, start applying exemptions to all sorts of different boards, and I don't know that I think our discussions about it here should be exempt. I think this may require a little more, a little more thought. I was just looking at it very narrowly, that the example that she used, I thought was a very good one, and it could be very easily targeted with an exemption for the Commission on Human Trafficking itself.
It seems like the document just needs to come back to us.
I think that's right. Maybe that's your second motion?
Yes, I will rescind the original motion and motion to direct the Government Affairs Office to bring back the county's Government Affairs State Legislature Priority List for Session 2025.
Okay, so do, this question is, do we not want to dispose of the original motion, or do you just want to roll that into Commissioner Wostol's substitute and do it all at that time?
Mr. Chair, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
It's in favor of Commissioner Wostol.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, you may ask a question. There's a deadline for filing appropriation requests in Tallahassee February 14th. And so if you do wish to rescind the program for reconsideration, could we get the board's permission to proceed with the appropriation requests?
I'll make that amendment. Commissioner Wostol?
All right, so essentially, it's a substitute, do the substitute.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wostol. Okay, Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, my main suggestion was going to be that we bring the whole list back and that we, I think based on what's been said, I think we're going to have to go through the whole list. I don't, I don't see how, based on what's been said here, we're not going to be able to, we're going to have to revisit this, I think.
I'm with you, but we don't have a meeting until the...
Until the 19th, right?
Yeah.
Is that right? I'm, I'll support the motion today to go ahead with appropriation requests, but I think on the 19th, we got to take the whole list.
Yeah.
If that's, if that's, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Cameron Sapeta?
Yes, so because there's a deadline, I would remove mine completely from the list. That way, we can go ahead and approve everything, because there is a deadline, and I don't want to hold up anything. And we can discuss this, and this can be for another time. Yes.
I think we're accomplishing that with the motion on the floor. So I think, I think we're good. Okay, now, see anyone else in the queue? Got a motion, substitute, the substitute, in a second. Please record your vote.
I'm a yes.
There we go.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie, next on.
All righty, thank you. We can go to our 10:15 time certain. Mr. Chair, these are your two items. Item F3 regarding negotiating a contract extension for me, and then F4, a contract for Melinda, County Internal Auditor.
Okay, board members, this is consistent with how the board has handled contract extensions in the past. If there are no objections, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cohen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bowles. Please record your vote on F3.
Motion carried five to zero.
And same with F4.
Motion carried five to zero.
All right, thank you. Same with F4, so we can have a motion.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bowles. Commissioner Wostol?
I just, we just previously went over this, and it's fine if we're doing this. I mean, this isn't even, okay, good, this is a negotiated contract, but you know, we just went through a whole process to review this office, its history. I don't know if any of you have taken the time to read it, but essentially, over the decades that this office has been created, it's been watered down and reduced to nothing, other than a quality assurance department. Everything it was intended to be originally is now gone. That has nothing to do with the work product of this department or Ms. Jenzarley. She's an extremely nice and intelligent person. I'm just speaking to the role of this office. It is not doing what it was intended to do. It has been reduced, I think, like eight or nine times at this point, and restructured. And I think that as the Charter Review Board is coming up, I hope that they take a big-picture view of this and see if they do want to keep it, do they want to make it what it was supposed to be doing, or do they want to just go ahead and remove the office entirely and give the internal auditor's spot and role back to the county clerk's office, which is under the state's constitution, the auditors of the government. I think that we're the, I think that we're the only county in the state of Florida that has this unique role. And if it's not going to do its original intent, so I just want to know if we're going to negotiate, what type of contract timeframe, Mr. Chair, are you asking them to negotiate if we're rolling into the Charter Review Board meets, I think, next week for the first time?
Yeah, I'll say that I, Commissioner Wostol makes several excellent points that I agree with. Again, I have read the document, and I was here for the entire existence of the Charter Review Board that was originally driven by, or of the Internal Performance Auditor that was initially driven by the Charter Review Board. I'm completely open to improving, I mean, first of all, let me step back and say, I've never, as a commissioner, engaged with whoever the Internal Performance Auditor was on a particular department. I don't want to say I'm agnostic to the future of it, but I'm open to changes, to improving it, to anything that Charter Review Board may consider. All that being said, the reason why I wanted to move forward is that Melinda's been in this position for 18 months. And I think that we should make her the permanent, in the permanent auditor position, however, recognizing that there may indeed be changes down the road. And I don't walk into this with, hey, I'm going to, one year, two year, three year. We can discuss that, we can bring it to the board, what we come up with, and we can ultimately vote. I just think 18 months, candidly, I should have brought this forward a long time ago and it just slipped through the cracks. So that's kind of where I am, but I'm completely open to changing it, improving it.
Is it, is there these contracts two or three years?
It's completely up to the board.
The board. I mean, I think that she's extremely qualified for the position, so I have, I have no qualms with that. I just, I guess, eyes wide open of the realities that, of the conversations that we've recently had. So I will support her being negotiated with.
No, and those are, those are excellent points that I agree with, because the future, we don't know with the future. The Charter Review Board may decide to go down a certain path, put it on the ballot, and then it may not, it may not pass either. So we just have to have full transparency on the future, and you know, as long as she's comfortable with that and aware of that, then I think we're in pretty good shape. Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, I agree completely with you both. What I would point out is that even if the Charter Review Board recommended a change or an abolishment of the position, it wouldn't get voted until November 26. It's unlikely, you've got two years between now and the earliest that something could really take place. So knowing that, I do think it makes sense to go ahead and move ahead.
Commissioner Bowles?
Again, and I agree with Commissioner Cohen, if Ms. Jenzarley's going to be in there and has been in there 18 months to drag it out where she's not being compensated like her predecessor was, and/or not under the same, you know, metrics that her predecessor was, that we should at least hold her to that and give her the compensation that goes along with it.
Agreed. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Bonnie?
The next item is item B4. This is, Kevin Bricky will present this item. It is regarding advance payments from FEMA regarding Hurricane Milton debris collection.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricky, Management and Budget. Item B4 seeks approval for a budget amendment to appropriate a total of $81.75 million within the board's FEMA Hurricane Milton Disaster Fund. $80.67 million is expected from FEMA as an advance payment for Hurricane Milton debris removal costs. The remaining $1.075 million is anticipated interest earnings on the advance payment, which must be remitted back to the state. It is anticipated that eligible debris removal costs incurred during the period of October 14th of last year through February 10th will be reimbursed by FEMA at 100%.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion? Commissioner Wostol?
I'm going to move approval and just say that I hope that everybody that lives in Hillsborough knows that nobody in the state of Florida could have outperformed Hillsborough County staff on debris cleanup, and we would likely still be suffering from those detriments for an entire year if it wasn't for them and their hard work to this.
All right, we get a motion by Commissioner Wostol, second, Commissioner Cohen. Don't see anyone else in the queue. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Cohen's item, item F1 regarding the regional resiliency summit. Couldn't quite get that out. Sorry, Commissioner Cohen.
Commissioner Cohen?
I move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Cohen, second, Commissioner Wostol. Please record your vote on F1.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. The next item, Commissioner Hagan, is your item regarding directing staff to bring forth the next steps regarding facilitation of the widening of Van Dyke Road and Lithia Pinecrest Roads.
All right, thank you. This won't take long. Board members, last November, county residents renewed the CIT, which is a critical funding source for many county infrastructure projects, not the least of which is transportation. Two transportation projects were specifically identified, Van Dyke Road and Lithia Pinecrest Road. I have seen a recent email from staff on an update of Lithia Pinecrest in District 4, and I would like a similar update for Van Dyke Project in District 2. However, I would like staff to publicly present the status of both projects at our next board meeting. We've already established capital improvement project ID numbers for both. We've also funded preliminary design work for each project, but I'm told by staff that full design and land acquisition needs to be funded to keep these projects moving. I think it's critically important for us to keep these high-profile CIT projects in the public eye so that our residents know what to expect. One thing, and I can tell you from experience, one thing we did not do particularly well with the initial CIT was informing the public and celebrating the completion of infrastructure projects funded by the CIT. I've said for years that Pasco and Pinellas have done a much better job of highlighting how their public tax dollars have been invested. I do know that staff is working on ways to highlight the CIT projects so the community continually sees a return on investment in our infrastructure. That being said, with the motion, I would like updates to include the following information to the public. The total estimated cost of each project, the amount funded for current PD&E work, and the amount still needed to get to the construction plan stage so these projects can be bid, the estimated major milestones and dates for each project to go to construction, and the plan for public outreach on these projects. Our residents have been begging and pleading for congestion relief in these areas for many, many years. And with the passage of the CIT, I want to ensure that there isn't a delay from moving from one stage to the next, because funding has either not been approved or allocated... or allocated. Again, I can tell you, in the past, many times, projects have been delayed because of lack of funding, and I don't want to see that occur with these projects. I'm sure we'll discuss other CIT projects in the near future and as staff, you know, works to, you know, hit the ground running and implementing the projects we included. But for starters, I do think that we should focus on these high-profile projects. So I'm going to pass a gavel to Commissioner Miller, but the motion is to direct the county administrator to provide a report at the February 19th BOCC meeting on a timeline and next steps for the facilitation of the widening of Van Dyke and Lithia Pinecrest and included the, the requested information that I identified in my remarks. So that's the motion.
Commissioner Winstall?
Thank you. I don't know if somebody's going to second him, but as, as he mentioned, the administrator responded to my future item from last meeting. And to much to my surprise, two news articles were written about it yesterday, and I was reading some of the comments, and, and there were still a lot of folks that were saying, yeah, right, it's, when is that ever going to be funded? And I was responding to them, saying, you know, you, you did fund it. Congratulations. But people were still not aware that, which is a problem with the way that, you know, the short summaries on the ballot doesn't get into the granular detail of everybody, and they probably didn't read the list, the bullet point list, all the way maybe. But my concern with doing these two items together is that these are going to be received in two wildly different ways, in my opinion. Van Dyke Road is going to met, be met with a lot of public resistance from the members of Keystone. That is going to happen. They're going to suggest that these developments are going to promote more development into the region. I would, I would point out to them, though, and why I, I brought Lithia Pinecrest up independently, much to the reasons that Commissioner Hagan said, is that I don't want this to somehow fall through the cracks and not be funded after it was line item approved and for those funds to be re-appropriated because, as was said many times, this list, the inter-local agreement, the approved items list, could be amended at a later date. I want to make sure that we lock in the funding for these major projects, and I will support him in getting Van Dyke Road done. But I believe it behooves this commission to do these completely separate, in their presentations entirely because Lithia Pinecrest would have been done two decades ago, but a commissioner at the time convinced the public that if they torpedoed the project and the improvement, that they would halt development. Well, we see how that worked out. And two decades later, everyone is suffering with a lack of infrastructure. I believe in fully now Lithia Pinecrest is going to be extremely well-received, which was most of the response on the two news articles after the documents that Administrator Wise provided for my future item from last month. I don't understand the benefit of bringing these two side by side, so I would encourage us to keep them completely separate because they are going to be received in completely separate ways from the public.
Yeah, I'll just respond to a couple of things. First of all, I completely agree they should be handled separately. The reality is Van Dyke will be, the design phase will be complete in the next month or two, and they're ready to go to land acquisition right now. We're ready to move on Van Dyke. The reality is Lithia Pinecrest is, is a long-term play. It's going to take many years and a couple hundred millions of dollars to get there. To be completely candid, I added Lithia Pinecrest as a courtesy to Commissioner Miller because both of these were identified in the CIT as major transportation projects, and I thought that it would be a good idea just to get, and I did read, all the board members read, was a very thorough report by staff. However, I think what I asked for would give a little more specificity and a little, talk a little bit about the money and exactly what is needed at what time in order to fund Lithia Pinecrest, but Van Dyke's ready to go. So I agree, they should be handled separately. This was just to get an update on exactly the next steps, the specific dollar amounts associated with the next steps for Lithia Pinecrest, but that timeline is going to take a lot longer than Van Dyke. So I agree, and I'm happy to remove it if we don't want to hear that come back, but, because Van Dyke's ready to go. But this was really more of a courtesy because both of the projects, again, were identified in the CIT. I know there's interest in both, and so I said, I thought it'd be a good idea to, to show the public that, hey, we're still, we're moving forward on both of these, but if it's the pleasure of the board, we can just do Van Dyke now. It doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
I have the gavel, correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Winstall?
Go, go ahead. Oh, okay, thank you. I believe that we've already started purchasing land for Lithia Pinecrest.
I think the question is, because the CIT, the real, the money doesn't really start coming until 26.
Which I was going to ask.
However, there is still work and a lot of work that can be done before that time period, and I think that's the question, whether the steps necessary, whether it's land acquisition, whether it's PD and E, and I think providing you all with that timetable is appropriate.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to be bringing forward items and requests to remove and delete as much red tape as possible to ensure that Lithia Pinecrest is bought forward in a timely manner. I, I was discouraged when I saw so many TBDs on the report that I got. I, I think that that's, that's an energy that we just can't, can't have going forward. TBD was 10 years ago in a lot of these areas. So I think that I, we can hear the presentations, but they need to be handled completely separate. I mean, I don't, there's, I don't think that Commissioner Miller needs any courtesy as extended to her. The taxpayers gave you the courtesy and approved it, the items in design, and we're already moving forward on land acquisition, and I want to make sure that there's no unexpected obstacles and hurdles that are presented to getting that because that's the most major improvement that I, that I know of in Hillsborough County.
Procedurally, Mr. Van Dijk, we don't have a second on the floor, is that correct? We've had this discussion, there's no second, so we can't make a.
Second.
So he's making a second to the original motion? Commissioner Winstall, were you making?
Yeah, I, I will make a substitute motion to hear Van Dyke Road and Lithia Pinecrest Road heard separately on different presentations and entirely different items.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just said second. I did.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, you said, was there a second?
No.
Oh.
I asked if there was any discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Call of the vote? I don't know what I'm doing. Sorry, I don't know what I'm doing yet.
Cameron Cepeda. Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you, board members. Bonnie, next item?
Okay, thank you. The next item is item F five. This is Commissioner Winstall's item regarding removing fluoride from the water resources process in accordance with the new legal findings.
Commissioner Winstall?
Thank you, colleagues. My item here today, I wanted to clear up a couple of things that were set first. I actually received an unexpectedly large amount of text messages to my private cell phone, which I think is being handed out, of people who are very passionate about this issue requesting to come speak. And I actually discouraged every single one of them. I discouraged them that I, I didn't feel like I needed the support vocally because I didn't feel the need to bombard the board. I didn't discourage them from coming and expressing their constitutional right. I would never do such a thing. I simply discouraged them on the ground that I think that this item is much more simple than is being presented from anybody. This is not a partisan item. The judge in this case was appointed by Barack Obama in 2011 in Northern California. This ruling is coming from an appointment by one of the most liberal presidents of our lifetime in an extremely liberal area, and it was based on loads of empirical data from scientists and medical professionals that had an extremely high bar, which was spelled out in all the documents. I've been talking about this for months and months now. This is not a surprise, and I, I've asked for this information from staff a couple of months ago now. "To succeed in a suit brought under the amended TSCA, plaintiffs must prove by a preponderance of evidence that a risk of injury to human health is present and that such risk is unreasonable." I'm not an attorney, but these are some of the most highly qualified professionals in these industries that went against one of the largest regulators of this industry, the EPA, back in September. The reason that I discouraged, I think that I could have gotten over 100 people in here drowning this room if that was my desire, and it was not. I focused on one thing and one thing only that this judge said, that again, was appointed by Barack Obama. There are not libertarian children, there are not Democrat children, there are not Republican children, there are children. And I believe that reasonable people can look at new legal rulings and empirical data and say, hey, this might be unhealthy for our children, and we should take every action possible to protect them. If there is even one iota of a chance that it could hurt children, I believe that that's something that I could never have my conscience on supporting. In fact, I would challenge or be very concerned of the motivations of anybody that would support such an item. This judge ruled in one sentence, and this was the only thing that was important to me, specifically, "The court finds that fluoridation of water at .7 milligrams per liter," which is exactly what Hillsborough County has done for a long period of time, "the court finds that fluoridation of water at .7 milligrams per liter, the level presently considered quote-unquote optimal in the United States poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children." Now that I've said it out loud, it sounds almost diabolical that I have to sit here and argue for it to be removed. Who in their right mind would support such a measure after people way more qualified than anybody in the room today have decided that it, quote, "presents an unreasonable risk to reduce the IQ of our children"? I was completely unaware of the aspects that it goes, the other affected party, for the three ladies on the board. I didn't even know that was a thing because I'm not deep on the weeds on this, but if you simply scroll down to, I believe, the very next two pages, "The pooled benchmark dose analysis concluded that a one-point drop in IQ of a child is to be expected for each .28 milligrams per liter of fluoride in a pregnant mother's urine. This is highly concerning because maternal urinary fluid levels, fluoride levels for pregnant mothers in the United States," there was a suggestion that this was all based on overseas, "these highly concerning because maternal urinary fluoride levels for pregnant mothers in the United States range from .8 milligrams a level at the median and 1.89 milligrams a level depending upon the degree of exposure." This is the new ruling. Science has changed, as some of the medical professionals presented. It used to be a much higher benchmark than it is now, 1.2. Then it was found after better testing was created. Okay, now we need to go down to .7. And now after this new lawsuit, the main reasons that the judge found is because he said, hey, you don't even have the technology to meaningfully tell me if lower, levels lower than .7 are damaging the children. It doesn't even exist for them. There is no way that I could sleep well at night knowing that we're doing this and potentially exposing children. We're already doing it to the max of .7. I went and looked at my son's toothpaste, it has fluoride in it. His mouthwash has fluoride in it. My toothpaste has fluoride in it. We have no disclaimer on the faucets that say, hey, we're already increasing your water to the maximum fluoridation rates of .7. Maybe you shouldn't be using toothpaste or mouthwash because we could be unwittingly increasing you above these levels. None of those things exist. Right now, the natural fluoride levels in our water, I believe, are .4 to .5. Those are the natural limits plus some soft additive of all of the other dental hygiene equipment that is readily available to the public. There is no way that I could continue to support this additive of the fluoridation of the water in Hillsborough County. I motion to terminate our process of adding fluoride to the water in the Water Resources Department effective immediately.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Winstall to terminate the process of adding fluoride to our water, second by Commissioner Miller and Cameron Cepeda. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Yes, before we vote, I'd just like to read a few quotes that I heard this morning by the speakers. There was Ms. Debbie Potts that said, there's a black box warning about fluoride. Ms. Bruno said, there's fluoride disrupts our system, and we should be able to choose what goes in our body. There was Ms. Hartman that said, there's no informed consent of what goes into our body. Ms. Metcalf that stated, there's no, it's not safe for our children and pregnant women, and also, it's harmful if swallowed. And also, Mr. Ramos, who said, there's, medical treatment requires informed consent, and that's just a few of the many that we heard this morning, so I will support removing fluoride from our water.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My phone also blew up this weekend, and it was from dentists, particularly pediatric dentists, who were expressing alarm that the board was going to take this action without really any real notice other than an off-the-agenda item placed on, on Friday. We heard a lot of speakers this morning. By my count, the only two speakers who were actually medical doctors or dentists both urged us to use extreme caution in making this type of a decision so quickly without at least a broader and more comprehensive discussion. While the legal opinion that you cite is no doubt out there, I should tell you that on January 6th, the American Dental Association specifically mentioned that study and said that it does not provide any new evidence to warrant changing current community water fluoridation practices. The American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry actually said that community water fluoridation is recognized as one of the 10 greatest public health achievements of the 20th century. The, the source for that was the federal government, the Centers, the Center for Disease Control. And what was interesting is, when I went on the Department of Health and Human Services website to research this, I found that the federal government is still recommending .7 fluoride in the water. And I, I bring that up because you mentioned that it's not a partisan issue. With all of the websites that the Trump administration has taken down in its first two weeks, this one is still up there. This recommendation is actually still the position of the federal government. So at the very best, at the very best, there may be a difference of opinion, not just about, I think, whether fluoride should be in the water or not, but what is the optimal amount, given that people do receive fluoride from, from other places. So with that, my view is that the absolute most that we should do under the circumstances is schedule a workshop with medical professionals who are both for and against the fluoride being placed into the water, and let's have a broad discussion that includes people in all areas but who are experts, bigger experts than, than certainly we are, on whether or not we should take this step, and then we, we can. this step, and then we can vote on it. In my view, taking one court case that may or may not be filled with accurate information and making a public health determination of this magnitude is extremely irresponsible. What I was told over and over again by the dentists that I spoke to this week is that this has been one of the most successful public health initiatives that's ever taken place. Over a period of a century, we managed to reduce significantly the amount of cavities and dental work that people, children, need, and there is a very, very real risk that by removing the fluoride from water, we're going to have an entire generation of people with major dental issues, particularly lower economic people who don't have the benefit of regular dental care and good nutrition where they're going to get these substances in other ways. So I'm going to urge caution on this and that we have a much more robust discussion about it before we take any action. So as a result of that, my vote is definitely going to be no.
Commissioner Wustel?
Are you a medical doctor? I'm asking because you called my item irresponsible.
I think it is responsible, and no, I'm not a medical doctor.
Okay. So I am happy to hear that you're willing to risk the health of our children in Hillsborough County on the record. I, however, after this clear court ruling from tons of medical doctors and scientists and researchers that beat the EPA under the court of law and found a preponderance of evidence, which is how our society works in the courtrooms, with those actual professionals, you're saying that I'm doing it randomly. No, no. Everybody has had the bully pulpit, and they went and they lost. Just last night, the Florida Surgeon General went to Lee County and testified. He is a medical professional. It is on the record in the state of Florida, and he breaks down all of the negative benefits that are associated with it. He does say that the dentists are welcome to continue to apply their topical, disgusting-tasting pink fluoride treatment that we've all gone through, and that he does note that there are the additives in toothpaste, tea, which I didn't even know about until today, I'm going to check my own tea, and mouthwash, and other various things that are in our daily diet that we don't even consider when we're pushing the fluoridation levels to the maximum limits. But irresponsible is a county commissioner advocating to overlook a preponderance of evidence that clearly demonstrated to our duly-appointed federal judges to say, "Hey, you are potentially unwittingly damaging the intelligence of our children. That is irresponsible, and that is not a risk that I could imagine anybody with a conscience being willing to take." So I hope that we can find the reasonable ground here that we already have natural limits of 0.4 to 0.5, natural fluoride levels of this natural minerals in Hillsborough County's water.
Commissioner Cohen?
From the limited amount of research that I've been able to do on this topic since you introduced it a few days ago, it's my view that it is highly irresponsible to take this action in light of the tremendous evidence that is out there to how fluoride improves the dental and otherwise health of children across the country and has for over a century. And again, I'm more than happy to bring in medical professionals on both sides of the issue, soon, if you would like, but to take a step like this when there is so much evidence to the contrary of what you are saying, you're relying on one court case in order to make a decision like this that could affect the public health of millions of people. And I do, I stand by my statement. I think it is irresponsible.
All right, Commissioner Wustel, then we're going to vote.
I've been talking about this topic for months now and bringing forward information, and this ruling has been out since September, which I have also brought up. One sentence and one sentence only, and I'll repeat it for my colleagues. "The level presently considered optimal in the United States poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children," and I will close.
Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Wustel, a second by Commissioners Miller and Cameron Cepeda. Please accord your vote.
Motion failed, three to three. Commissioners Bowles, Cohen, and Hagan voted no.
Okay. Bonnie, next item.
Those are all the items, so we just have future discussion items.
All right, Commissioner Myers had to leave, but she wanted me to read in the record. "The Cross Bay Ferry is in its final year of the county contract for staff to bring back a report on the ferry's performance and ridership needs at the March 5 meeting." Got that. Commissioner Bowles? Nope, you're good. Okay, anyone else in the queue?
I thought you wanted me to speak on her particular...
No, 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 no.
Okay, yes. I would like to, at the very least, state that the dialogue is good.
Point of order.
Commissioner Wustel?
We do not enter in debate during future items. The item is closed. You had your chance to speak on it, Commissioner Bowles, before you voted no.
We do not have discussion during future issues. We just identify items. Copy. Anyone else? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.